All right. Good evening, everyone, citizens and city council. This is the November twenty first, two thousand twenty three meeting in the West Richardson City Council. I'll call it to order at six P M. Before we get started this afternoon with the roll, I'll ask Stephanie if she'll read the high bred ground, high bred meeting ground rules and then call the roll, please.
Okay, thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit all comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom. Fred Rink.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
May Hates.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Here.
And Stoker.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Smart, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member. Thank you. Counsel, the agenda is before you. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, in light of the pending action against councilmember Smart, based on his comments from number seven, two thousand twenty three council member, council meeting, I propose, I propose to, uh, I move to postpone item eight I ordinance twenty six twenty three tax amendment, cannabis retail use until December nineteenth, regular city council meeting.
Okay, now there's been a motion of a change of the agenda. Is there a second on that change?
I'll second it.
Question in a second, uh, all in favor of tabling till nineteenth of November, you say? Or, excuse me, December?
Yes.
We don't want to go backwards. Uh, all in favor of that, say aye.
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 Uh, Ken, I didn't hear you out there. Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Oh, I've got a four two vote to go ahead and table that, Stephanie, if you'd make note of that, please. So that particular item on the agenda this evening, which was item eight I will be tabled and there will be no decision or discussion on that item this evening. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, like sign.
Aye.
And I didn't hear from Ken. Aye or nay on the amended?
It's aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Uh, with that presentations this evening, we have the presentation from Finance Director Aaron Gwynne of the, uh, third quarter financial report. So with that, I will go ahead and turn the floor over to Aaron.
All right, this evening, uh, thank you, Mayor Gary. Uh, good evening, council citizens. Uh, I don't usually get to present in front of such a crowd. Um, so this evening, I'm presenting the two thousand twenty three third quarter financial report. Uh, I'll start with an overview of an economic update, followed by specific financial information regarding the general fund, followed by other funds. Uh, for the first overview of the, uh, economy slide, uh, we'll start with unemployment, which increased to four point four percent for Benton County. This is up from three point three percent in my second quarter report, but still down from the beginning of the year. Uh, another economic indicator we've continued to monitor is inflation. One of the measures used is the Consumer Price Index, which nationally has a twelve month percentage increase of three point seven percent when comparing August of twenty two to August of two thousand twenty three. The Seattle Metro is, uh, higher at five point four percent when comparing the same time period. Both are slightly higher than my second quarter, uh, but not as high as we've seen in the past year. Locally, we look at the city's building activity. Uh, single family permits issued through the third quarter, uh, are about half of what they were in the previous year. However, uh, multi-family through third, um, quarter has more than doubled. Um, in terms of revenue generated, the city is at twenty per twenty one percent less building permit revenue than the same time period last, uh, last year. Um, this is another view of the new single family home permits. Uh, this shows, uh, the years in comparison, uh, along with the green line showing the increase in valuation. This is a great example that demonstrates the volatility of new home construction. Uh, you can see this data, uh, that permits have been on a downward trend since their peak in two thousand twenty one. Uh, they just had the state, um, uh, economic, um, forecast. Uh, I think it was emailed yesterday and it has the same trend. It's so we're right along, right in long with the rest of the state. Uh, the next ten slides look at specific details regarding the general fund. Uh, this slide shows where the money comes from in turn, in terms of budget. You can see that most general fund revenue is generated from taxes, which are sales tax, property tax, and utility taxes. Here's a view of the general fund revenues collected. Uh, the city collected twenty seven percent less revenue in two thousand twenty three compared to two thousand twenty two. A large part of this decrease is due to the ARPA money that was transferred in in the second and third quarters of two thousand twenty two. So this was a big, um, uh, American Rescue Plan, uh, Act money that, uh, cities got. It was about four point four million that was slowly transferred into the general fund to cover salaries, I believe. Uh, sales tax revenue, building permit revenue, charges for services, uh, which is primarily the plan review fee associated with building permits, saw decreases of ten, twenty one, and fourteen percent respectively. When reviewing trends, it's important to look at how we're doing, uh, in the budget. Uh, let me see. Uh, for third quarter in, uh, the year two thousand twenty three, the general fund collected approximately thirty five percent of budgeted revenues. We're looking to have collected at least thirty eight percent in this category. The city is under projections and we will discuss this further this evening in the mid biennial budget review. Uh, these next two slides look at sales tax revenue in the general fund. As shown in previous slides, sales tax decreased ten percent compared to the prior year for third quarter. Here's another view compares the different business sectors. The retail sector decreased sixteen percent, which represents thirty seven percent of the sales tax collected by the city. Construction is the other large sector, which also decreased by nine percent and represents twenty five percent of the sales tax collected. Another major revenue source in the general fund is from the utility taxes. Overall, utility tax revenue increased ten percent compared to two thousand twenty two. There were increases in all categories of utility tax, including telephone, cable, gas, electric, water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste. This increase can be contributed to, uh, partly the weather, um, from the colder earlier in the year. Um, new development that was completed in the prior year and some rate increases. Here's another look at utility tax. Uh, this is, uh, water, sewer, storm, and garbage, um, which have all seen stable percentage increase over time. Gas and electric saw significant increases and both, uh, telephone and cable remain, uh, pretty flat and static. Another major general fund source is property tax, which increased five percent, uh, in the same time period, uh, compared to the prior year. Uh, the majority of property tax revenue is collected in the second and fourth quarters. So now where does your money go? Uh, most expenses in the general fund are for public safety. Uh, this is a change from, uh, at forty one percent. Uh, this is a change from previous budget cycles, primarily due to a transfer out, which increased that category by fifteen percent. So we have a big project in the water fund, um, that the general fund is supporting. And that is kind of what we did with the ARPA money, who was the ARPA money was used to cover, uh, salaries and wages in the general fund so that we would have money to, uh, do the water project, uh, and then be able to do the water project cheaper as a non-federal project. Um, here's another look by department on where the money goes. Uh, total general fund expenditures were thirty percent of the biennial budget. Again, we're looking at thirty eight percent or less in this area. Uh, the city has special revenue funds for streets, park impact, criminal justice, and library. This graph displays the major revenue sources for each fund. The street fund and park impact fund each saw a decrease. Uh, park impact fund has a direct correlation to the building activity, which is slowing in two thousand twenty three. In addition to the building activity slowing, there's two larger subdivisions that have built or plan to build a park in lieu of paying the park impact fee. Also decreasing are fuel taxes, but remaining flat or slightly declining over several periods. Uh, this is a picture of the special revenue fund expenditures. The street fund saw an increase mostly due to some equipment purchases. Uh, park impact fee remained flat. Criminal justice fund has seen an increase primarily due to increased operating costs and hiring of an additional administrative professional utilizing public safety tax funds. Uh, the library has seen a slight decrease due to the renegotiated contract with Mid Columbia Libraries earlier this year. Uh, next we'll look at our capital project funds. Uh, this slide outlines the funds and their purposes. For Fund three oh one, the fund holds the state Route two twenty four project as well as real estate excise tax or what we consider REIT one. Fund three oh two, REIT two, uh, funds primarily for pavement preservation. Uh, this fund houses projects like the North Sixty Second Preservation Project. Fund three fifteen, this is where the bond funds are accounted for to construct a new police facility. Uh, this project is wrapping up. Uh, Fund three twenty one. This is was for a capital project construct cooperative way utilizing curb, uh, grant and loan funds, rural county capital funds, Benton, uh, rural electric contributions. Uh, this project is also wrapping up. Fund three fifty five is the transportation improvement program. This is where we account for several transportation improvement projects. One of the most notable recent projects is the bombing range Keene intersection modification. For revenues for project fund, there wasn't a lot of activity for the police, uh, fund or cooperative wave project fund, uh, because both of those projects are winding down. Also, you'll notice the extremely large budget in Fund three oh one, uh, REIT one. Uh, this is for the state Route two twenty four project that has started, but we anticipated carrying this project for several years. Revenues for three oh one and three oh two are the real estate excise tax. Uh, we saw a forty six percent decrease in collection compared to third quarter of last year. Compared to the pud, the budget, the city is on target for revenue projections. Uh, this form of revenue has a direct correlation with the sale of real property. Revenues for Fund three fifty five are from traffic impact fees. Uh, the city saw increases in collection compared to third quarter last year. These fees are related to building activities which have slowed. Um, the twenty three twenty four budget also includes, uh, payment from City of Richland, which you can see the big giant gray portion of that graph there on the end. Um, we received it in third quarter. Um, and that's, uh, uh, payment for the Badger Mountain Development Traffic Mitigation Fees. Um, this graph shows expenditures for capital project funds for the third quarter, both police facility and cooperative way projects, uh, winding down and don't have any significant expenditures. Fund three fifty five had the bombing range Road Keene Intersection Project and expenditures in three oh one with the state two twenty four project are just starting to pick up. Uh, these last few slides take a closer look at our utility funds. For re, for revenue, water collections increased five percent. There were just over five thousand seven hundred eleven water utility counts billed at the end of September, two thousand twenty three. Sewer collections increased three percent primarily due to an increase in the number of new residences in last year. Uh, here's an image of irrigation revenue. Irrigation collections, uh, increased one percent in third quarter. And this graph displays stormwater collection also up one percent compared to the same time period last year. And the last utility revenue is solid waste collections up twelve percent, primarily due to rate increases and additional residential development. This final slide is the view of the utility fund expenditures. For the most, these, uh, saw operating cost increases due to higher costs of materials and labor for the solid waste fund increased due to the contracted services. Uh, in stormwater fund, the purchase of a new street sweeper was a significant purchase. Both water and sewer system developments are due to the state Route two twenty four project and replacing the water and sewer lines prior to the construction of the roadway. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions of Aaron in her report this evening? Very well done. Thank you. Very good information. I appreciate it. Uh, Stephanie, just for the record, Councilman Bloom is present. He arrived at six, uh, twelve this evening. So thank you for joining us, sir. And, uh, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, which is considered housekeeping items. It's taken with one motion and second. Uh, the consent just, uh, this evening consists of payment of the bills, approve the minutes of the regular meeting in November seventh of two thousand twenty three. Motion to confirm the parks board appointments, which is Jay, uh, Johnson and Tammy Kahoon. Uh, ordinance twenty three twenty three amending Cascade Natural Gas Franchise Agreement and repealing ordinance nineteen twenty three. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? I see no one in house. Stephanie, do you see anybody virtually that would like to speak to the consent agenda? If so, raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone. And I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
That council may have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Like sign. Ken, you were there. Your thumbs up? I didn't hear you.
I said aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to citizen public comment. This is the first opportunity for citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening. If you would like to provide comments to the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. They'll have three minutes to address council. We'll start with anybody that's in the audience this evening and then we'll move to virtuals.
Yeah, my name is Rob Palmer. I live at thirty six hundred South Highlands Boulevard in West Richland. Um, to start off, I'd like you to know, I emailed some comments in regards to the special meeting last night. I wasn't able to attend, uh, since previous email comments, uh, several, not only my own, have not been included in the record. I've brought printed copies. I'd like to ask the clerk to distribute to the Anyway, like I said, good evening. Um, to start, I'd like to address the issue, um, the way in which our council agendas are organized. Uh, I've been spending a little more time now getting a little more involved. As you know, you've seen me here a couple of times now. Um, they effectively are preventing anyone from speaking to any business items on the agenda unless there's a public hearing until after the council's already made a decision. Um, looking back at past meetings, this apparently is the way the agenda's always been done. I feel it's just poor governance, govern, governance, excuse me. And none of the other agencies in our areas are doing it this way. And I'd like to see it changed here if we could, um, just something to consider. Um, you, you've said in the past, you advocate transparency. You say you encourage public involvement in matters. Yet the manner in which the meetings are being conducted is doing exactly the opposite. Um, as the council has stated in the past, people don't tend to attend these meetings, local government meetings very often. So when you do get a large number of citizens participating, filling the council chambers, whether it's in agreement or opposition to an issue, I think we really need to listen to them, uh, and base our voting on that. Um, there's been recent issues come up that have received a great deal of public participation, well thought out comments and emails, excuse me, from educated citizens of all ages and overwhelming opposition. Maybe if an issue is so divisive and has so much public concerning comments, you may need to put them on hold, which you did. I appreciate that. Maybe you're going to take the time and, and get more information before you make your decision on this. That's where I'm going with our next statement. You sort of did that for me. Um, or the other thing I suggested is, uh, Councilman Bloom suggested at the November seventh meeting, maybe we put the items that are so divisive up to the public for a vote. We get a very accurate survey that way. Um, either way, excuse me. Either way, I'd like to strongly encourage you to listen to the citizens you represent when they take their time out of their busy schedules to come down here and address these issues with you. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else this evening? See no one in the audience. Oh. Going once, going twice.
My name's Jennifer Page. My address is forty six fourteen Snowy Al Court here in West Richland. Um, and I as well would like to, um, very strongly encourage the council and the commissions, the teams, the committees that, that we have here in the city, such as the planning commission, to listen to the citizens. Um, I echo what this gentleman said. Um, there have been a number of meetings that have been held this year where the, the citizens of West Richland have very prominently spoken out on topics. And I feel like the council and the commissions are not listening to the people who are coming forward, speaking to these topics. And so I, I would like to remind you, counsel, that you are here to represent your, your citizens and we're speaking. Please listen.
My name is Kevin Shoemaker, seventeen oh eight Elmwood Avenue. Um, I'll preface my comments with, I'm assuming that since item eight I has been removed from the agenda, that that's now up for discussion. For comments, excuse me, yes. Allowing a cannabis shop is a long-term, one-sided relationship. It is not so much a relationship with the shop owner, but rather the state of Washington. And we have all seen that the state legislature as a whole is not a partner that we want for a red relationship. Once opened, you will be bound by changes that happen on how Washington handles cannabis and the associated dictates of the Social Equity Cannabis Board. Already, the Social Equity Board is encouraging that all license holders submit a social equity plan. And if they do, the board will, quote, reimburse such a licensee an amount equal to the cost of the licensee's annual cannabis license renewal fee, end quote. This is the carrot. But how long before the Social Equity Board uses the stick and makes social equity plans requirements? And if you are not familiar with the leanings and beliefs of the Social Equity Board, then I will tell you, in my opinion, they have a strange sense of what is best for a community. At the Planning Commission meeting, two proponents of the three total of opening a pot shop, neither of which live in West Richland and both holding licenses for pot shops in West Richland, tried to convince the committee that there is no negative components to a cannabis shop in the city. I would like to point out that if cannabis is benign, harmless, or even good for a community, then why did the Washington State Legislature and their own laws, which were drafted, promoted, and passed by those in favor of recreational marijuana, add the following wording into their law? Senate Bill fifty eighty, section two, eight A. Quote, "The board may not issue a license for any premises within one thousand feet of the perimeter of the grounds of any elementary or secondary school, playground, recreation center or facility, childcare center, public park, public transit center, library, or any game arcade, admission to which is not restricted to persons aged twenty one years or older." I ask you, if cannabis is such a wonderful thing, or at a minimum, will have zero detrimental effect on our community, why put this wording in? If cannabis is good for a community, one shouldn't be concerned about the exposure to young people. I thank you for your time and considering what is best for our community.
Anyone else this evening?
Name is Dan Greiner, fifty seven oh two Mulberry Drive, West Richland. Twenty month resident of West Richland, came to the last meeting. Maybe appointed for clarification on what you have down on ordinance twenty eight, but anyway. Came to the last meeting. Was pretty impressed with comments that were made by each of you. Noble, heartfelt, sincere. Went away taking you at your word. I thought I'm glad I'm in this community. It's not that there isn't easy access to cannabis. It's very near, as you know, in a slice of county. Nobody can use that as an excuse why it should be in West Richland. As you know, the amount of revenue gained from that is the smallest piece. Most of it goes to the state. I see no reason to justify it. I'm here to express that. I thought the issue was settled when I left last week, so when I found out it wasn't, it hasn't been settled. You're even considering some kind of a ordinance here, uh, which I don't understand. It makes me wonder. In this day and age, I don't have to tell you how hard it is to understand who really means what they say. And as an eighty six year old guy, I'm sick and tired of it. I have kids and grandkids. They don't necessarily live here part-time. But I'm not willing to roll over and play dead for all the issues I see facing us. And there's a multitude of them in this state and around the country. I don't know how to impress upon you what a lot of these people are trying to impress upon you and why they're here. I would like to hear a final decision. You don't see it on the agenda. I know a lot of nice things were said last time. As I understand it, I don't even see them in the, the report. They weren't recorded in the report. Why is that? It makes no sense to me. If you are sincere and you do care, you meant what you said last time, why aren't you insisting those things be written down and recorded? And then followed? Thank you.
What else? Excuse me, this evening? Yeah. Evening, Dean Rents, four one zero zero South Lake Court. Uh, wow, good job with bombing range in Keene. It turned out really nice. Good job. Uh, I'd like to ask, as I've been, lived in West Richland since ninety, I believe. Uh, love it here. Please don't let this happen. Please listen to the community. Don't let this happen. Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Rents. I live at forty one hundred, uh, South Lake Court. Uh, I'm a former city manager, retired city manager, and I've worked with many of you on boards and commissions. And I certainly understand, um, budgeting and I certainly understand issues that become, um, before a council and how difficult it is to make these decisions. So I applaud you for even considering, um, what's coming before you. But in regards to the, um, proposal that you've put off now until, um, December, which again makes it very difficult for people to continue to come, um, and, 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 uh, providing information. But there's a couple of points I do want to make. But there's a couple of points I do want to make. I have sent emails to you, and I know that you've received those. I had sent them in time to be included in the agenda packet, and I double checked today, the last time, which was your November seventh meeting. I sent it in on the first by eight o'clock in the evening. It was recorded in the meeting on the seventh that it was not received in time after the posting or by the posting. The posting of the agenda was after one o'clock in the afternoon the next day. So my concern is there is information provided to you, and and I know I sent it to you individually for that very reason. But there's a reason why you want them in your packet. It's for the citizens to read it, not just you. And that's important that they see what the other citizens are saying. Also, I went back and reviewed the agenda, watched it, and I appreciated very much some of the comments that were made that reflected what was being said from the the people that attended that meeting. I could not be there. I was on vacation. I was actually making banana bread with my granddaughter. But I took the time to submit comments, and I would just encourage you to listen to your citizens. Do not govern by Facebook. The mayor knows that I said that a lot of times. It's one thing to put out a survey and and see information. That's a guide. That is not a mandate. Once it comes here, then you get the citizens to to give you their input on specifics, not in generalities. And I think that you've received that from the community, and I would just encourage you to consider that at your next meeting. So thank you very much.
Anyone else this evening? Stephanie, do we have anybody virtually raise hands or star nine by phones? I see no one on my screen. How about you, Stephanie?
I do not see anyone, no.
With that, we'll go ahead and continue on to ordinances, resolutions, motions, and public hearings. Item eight A and eight B are a public hearing and a resolution to approve a frontage waiver for property on Van Geesten at the SR two twenty four. With that, I'll ask Public Works Director Roscoe Slade to present his staff report this evening. Roscoe?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, what you have before you was a is a petition for a fringe waiver. We've seen several of these along Van Geesten with the SR two two four Red Mountain Project going to complete these improvements in the future. The property that's before you is lot one of Record of Survey fifty three twenty three. It's old railroad right of way that the city purchased back in ninety five. It's early this year, council declared it surplus. So it is city owned property. It's right across the street from the police station there on Van Geesten. As I said earlier, council declared the property surplus. Community Development Mendehall has been working with the city's real estate agent to market it. It's actually out for sale. And the recommendation was to go through and there's a few issues with the property with encumbrances, some cleanup, and one of them is to process a fringe waiver to help market the property. So on October seventeenth, City Council passed Resolution seventy one twenty three that set up a public hearing for tonight. The property was posted. We also posted three public areas. And then property owners within six hundred feet, whether they were county or city, were received notification on that and franchise utilities. As of this afternoon, I didn't receive any comments, Stephanie. So Stephanie didn't receive any written comments. With the frontage waiver, council can approve it with or without conditions. The terms or requirements are no way but must find that. Let me start over. Requirements of the chapter are no way detrimental to the best interest of the city will not be contrary to its intent to the public interest, safety, health, welfare, and where special conditions or exceptional characteristics of the subject property or little enforcement will result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships. Again, we've we've taken several of these to council because it didn't make sense to piecemeal frontage improvements when we know there's a large capital project that's going to build them. Again, what's before you is a resolution that would approve a frontage waiver for this property. Typically, in the past, council has conditioned these on the dedication of additional right of way and utility easements. It's not in this one because council has already dedicated additional road right of way and utility easements that were needed for the project. So that's why it's a little different than the previous ones you've seen. And this is something that staff's recommending for approval.
Thank you, Roscoe. So I will open the public hearing at six thirty five. If anybody would like to comment on this agenda item this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, limit your comments to three minutes. We'll start with in person first and then move to virtual. Anyone would like to make comment? I see no one in house, and if it's virtually star nine or raise your virtual hand. Stephanie, I see no one virtually. Do you?
I do not.
With that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at six thirty six. Council, is there a motion on Resolution seventy five twenty three, three roadway frontage improvement waiver for Van Geesten SR two twenty four lot one, ROS fifty three twenty three?
I move to approve Resolution seventy five twenty three, granting frontage improvement waiver for frontage improvement to Van Geesten State Route two twenty four.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions that haven't been previously addressed in the staff report? I'll reach out to Councilmember Bloom.
Mr. Slade, just one clarification. The proposed improvement State Route two twenty four, how far further out do they go?
So full, full, complete streets, which is curbed better sidewalks, streetlights.
Distance into the county.
They don't go into the county.
So they
So, yeah, so we're doing both sides of the street, all the way just short of Red Mountain Road. We own the the right of way on both sides. Early this year, there was half of the road right of way along that county pocket across from the raceway. That has been added into the corporate limits of the city. So those improvements on both sides will go to just short of the intersection there right now.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Director Slade, just mainly for the benefit of all the citizens that we have here tonight. What is the timeframe for that work to be initiated and perhaps completed?
The SR two two four Red Mountain Transportation Improvement Project is a twenty fifteen connecting Washington project that the state DOT was to design, construct, and approve. In twenty twenty one, it still wasn't moving forward, and so the city executed a contract with the DOT to take over that work. So the city staff has actually taken that on with some assistance with consultants. That occurred in April of twenty two. And so I'm happy to say that we're back on schedule, the revised schedule. And so we've got about another year of completing the design. There's a little bit of right of way to be acquired. And the current schedule has us putting that out to add this time next year. And unfortunately, it'll be two years of construction. It's three miles of roadway, five roundabouts, and a lot of work. It's thirty one and a half million dollar project. It's funded through through the state, so.
Thank you for that update, Director.
It was a good question, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. And just for everyone's notice, it is a state highway and the state are the ones that are mandating roundabouts. So I'll just kind of throw it out there for you. But all right, very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Thank you. Motion carries unanimous. Moving on to items eight C and D are a public caring and an ordinance for the mid biennial budget update and amendment. And again, we'll ask Aaron Gwynne, our finance director, present her staff report this evening. Aaron?
Hey, I put a presentation together for this one, too. I'll give Stephanie a second to put it up. Okay, so this evening I'm presenting the twenty three twenty four mid biennial budget review and the seventh budget amendment of the twenty three twenty four budget. Per RCW thirty five A dot thirty four dot one three zero, the city shall provide by ordinance a mid biennial review and make applicable adjustments to the biennial budget between the eighth month and the end of the first year. The this process for review only addresses items that are need budgetary changes. The finance staff has reviewed all lines within the budget as well as consulted with department directors to determine the areas that need to be updated. One change being recommended across all funds is an increase in interest revenue. Interest revenue across all funds currently has a budget for twenty three twenty four biennium in the amount of two hundred and six thousand four hundred and six dollars. The interest revenue collected through third quarter of twenty twenty three is one million three hundred and three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. The budget amendment recognizes an increase in interest revenue across all funds in the amount of one million eight hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and ninety six dollars. So the significance of this is the interest rates. I mean, that's one upside for us. I looked back and I think it was this time last year in mid twenty twenty two when we were creating the budget. We were receiving about two point two percent interest on our money, and now we're receiving five point four. So that's the big difference. I'll go through the suggested updates by fund, starting with the general fund. Staff is recommending decreasing general fund revenues by five hundred and ninety nine thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars. The significant changes are five hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and sixty one dollar reduction to tax revenue, a six hundred and fifty five thousand dollar reduction to building permit revenue, and a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase to interest revenue. I'm going to show you a bit of the methodology used for making these adjustments. This slide shows the current budget versus actual collected through third quarter for sales tax. In the graph, the light area represents the total budget for the biennium, and the dark area represents the actual collected amount through third quarter. In this slide, the highlighted area, the next slide, represents the amount of revenue collected below sales tax revenue projections. Never mind. Did you not skip to? Can you go back one? Maybe it's not showing up. Okay. But anyway, that the difference, that little triangle piece there is the the difference in what we're below the projection amount. At the end of third quarter, the city collected thirty one point seven percent of the budgeted revenue. Again, we're looking for thirty eight percent at this point. This slide shows the graph after making an adjustment to the the projected revenue. In this case, we're reducing sales tax revenue by seven hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. And it changes the slope of line to match the trend for sales tax collection. I'm not going to show you the progression through each of these adjustments, but just trying to give you an idea through my methodology behind each adjustment. This slide shows the combination of utility tax revenue, which includes taxes collected from water, sewer, storm, solid waste, and cable, telephone, electric, and gas utilities. The difference between this graph and the one I showed you for sales tax is this one is collecting more revenue than projected. You can see the little darker point at the top. This is primarily due to rate increases that occurred after the budget was established last fall. In this case, we recommend increasing revenue projection by one hundred and fifty six thousand eight hundred and fifty five dollars. Another big adjustment in the general fund is the reduction of building permit revenue. This graph shows the city is not meeting projections and through the third quarter has collected twenty four percent budgeted revenue. Ideally, we should have collected thirty eight percent. This amendment is reducing building permit revenue in the amount of six hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Other revenue modifications to the general fund are as follows. Thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety ninety dollar reduction to other permits and licenses. This is from a combination of pet license and franchise fees. Fifty seven thousand one hundred and thirty four dollar increase in grant revenue. These are three different police grants for supplies, services, and equipment. Thirty four thousand three hundred and fifty six dollar reduction to intergovernmental revenues. The majority of this is from state shared revenue for city assistance. Twenty one thousand two hundred and seventy five dollar increase to charges for services, primarily market fees and field activity fees. Thirteen thousand five hundred dollar increase to fines and penalties, primarily from traffic penalties. Fifty nine thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollar increase in miscellaneous revenue. This is from items such as travel reimbursements from ECA for the mayor's travel, contribution from GISA for the police, and sale of surplus equipment. It also includes a thirty two thousand dollar increase from the transfer of the fund oh oh six, which we'll get to in a minute, but we're looking at closing that fund. For expenditures, we have one item, the indirect cost allocation that affect multiple funds. For the general fund, there is a thirty seven thousand four hundred and thirty two dollar reduction to expenditures. The purpose of the indirect cost allocation is to charge other funds for services provided, such as finance, IT, city clerk, and human resources. The Washington State Auditor requires the city to reduce the expense in the general fund and increase the expense in the fund receiving the service. There are not too many alterations to the general fund expenditures in this budget amendment, and the majority are offset by grant or miscellaneous revenues received. The adjustments are as follows. Twelve thousand one hundred and fifty dollar increase to the mayor's travel budget. This is offset by reimbursements the city receives from the Energy Alliance Communities or ECA. For the police, a twenty four thousand two hundred and sixty dollar increase to the professional services for the court budget. This is the only item that does not have an offsetting revenue increase. Also for police, there is an increase in the amount of forty five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars for supplies and equipment. This increase is offset by grant revenue. One thousand one hundred and sixty one dollar increase for employee wellness program. This is offset by contributions that employees made. Staff is recommending a total general fund appropriation increase in the amount of forty five thousand nine hundred and forty nine dollars. The sum of the revenue reduction and expenditure increase will result in the reduction to the general fund ending balance in the amount of six hundred and forty five thousand three hundred and sixty two dollars. So for the cumulative reserve fund, the city expects to sell a property in the Belmont Business District. This amendment recognizes a two hundred and sixty one thousand three hundred and sixty one dollar increase in revenue for the gross proceeds from the sale. Appropriations are increased for closing costs in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. For the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund oh oh six, it's another managerial fund to the general fund that was created to track revenue from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds received from the federal government. The city has expended all funds and completed the federal single audit. The funds remaining in this fund are revenue from interest, which has no restrictions. This amendment recognizes an additional three hundred and fifty six dollars in interest revenue and appropriates thirty two thousand dollar transfer to the general fund. This fund will then be closed. Next, we'll look at special revenue funds. For the Park Impact Fund one oh four, this amendment decreases revenue in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. This reduction is primarily due to decreased park impact fee collection due to slowing building activity, as well as the mitigation agreements in place for the two developers. The decrease is offset by an increase in the interest revenue. For Criminal Justice Fund one oh five, this amendment increases revenue in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. This is a combination of decreases in taxes and state shared revenue, along with an increase in interest revenue. This amendment increases appropriations in the amount of sixty five thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for costs associated with Benton County Emergency Services Interlocal Agreement. For the Tourism Promotion Fund one oh six, revenues are increased in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars primarily primarily due to increased hotel motel tax and interest revenue. Library Fund one twenty-one uh recognizes a sixteen thousand dollar additional in interest. Uh, next for capital project funds, uh, the REIT one, Fund Three oh one uh recognizes an increase in interest revenue in the amount of a hundred and one thousand and an increase in appropriations in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the indirect cost allocation and some additional bank fees. REIT two, Fund Three oh two, recognizes an increase in interest revenue in the amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. For the police fund, three fifteen, this amendment recognizes a thirteen thousand dollar increase in interest revenue and a fifty dollar increase in bank uh appropriations for bank fees. Fund three twenty-one, Curb Cooperative Way, is a capital project fund is funded with Curb Grant Funds, Roll County Capital Funds, Curb Loan Funds and a Benton Rural Electric Association contribution. Uh, part of Benton REA's contributions are for the repayment of the Curb Loan. Uh, when the project began, it was anticipated the Benton REA would pay the Curb Loan off upon completion of the project. However, due to economic conditions and a low interest rate of the Curb Loan, Benton REA has expressed that they will be making the payments over time. Uh, this amendment and attached ordinance reduces revenues and expenditures in the amount of six hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and creates a debt service fund two oh eight for Curb Cooperative Way and all of our debt service uh payments will uh utilize that fund going forward. In Fund Three fifty-five, Transportation Improvement Program, this amendment recognizes a reduction in revenue in the amount of ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollars, primarily due to the slower building activities and less transportation fees being collected. The reduction is offset by an increase in interest revenue. Also for Fund Three fifty-five, this amendment increases appropriations in the amount of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars for the indirect cost allocation. Moving on to the utility funds, we'll start with Fund Four oh one, Water Sewer Operating Fund. Revenues are increased in the amount of three hundred and six thousand, six hundred dollars due to interest. Appropriations are increased in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. This is made up by the following three items. Uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for repairing and rebuilding South Thirty-Eight from the water break that happened earlier this fall. A hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars for indirect cost allocation. A hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the debt service payments uh to Public Works Trust Fund for Well Two, which that is an ongoing uh project as well. Uh, next is the Stormwater Utility Fund Four oh four. Uh, this amendment recognizes five hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars in additional revenue uh coming from a hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh of grant revenue from the Department of Ecology. Uh, interest revenue in the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars and three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars in a settlement received from the Monsanto Class Action lawsuit. For Fund Four oh five, uh Solid Waste Fund, this amendment recognizes additional seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars in revenue. The sources are from collection revenue in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, three thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars in fines and penalties and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars in investment interest. Appropriations for Fund Four oh five have increased by seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Both indirect cost allocation and other services are reduced in appropriations in the amount of seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars respectively. There are increases in appropriations for utility billing in the amount of eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. This is partly due to how utility bu- billing is budgeted. Prior to twenty twenty-three, utility billing was budgeted in the general fund and there were recouped through the indirect cost allocation. When we were creating the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, there was not a lot of direct history to base our budget estimates. Um, appropriations also increasing for the Ed's disposal contract and taxes in the amount of five hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars respectively. These increases have a direct correlation with the increase in collection revenue. Moving on to Fund Four four one, Water System Development Fund, revenues are increased in the amount of four hundred thousand, one dollar. Included in the increase is a reduction to the system development fees in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, primarily due to less building activity. Uh, investment in revenue and grant revenue both increased in the amounts of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars and a hundred and sixty-two thousand, one dollar respectively. Also for Fund Four four one, an increase in appropriations in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, this is for indirect cost allocation taxes, professional services. Uh, the professional services line is for a contract amendment with J U B that was approved by council in February of this year, but not captured in any of our previous budget amendments. For the final utility slide, we have Fund Four four two, Sewer System Development, which recognizes an increase in revenue in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-three thousand dollars due to interest proceeds. Uh, this amendment also appropriates an additional two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars for the indirect cost allocation. And finally, Fi- Fund Four fifty-one, Waterline Development Fund recognizes an increase in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for investment interest. This amendment authorizes an overall increase in the twenty-three, twenty-four appropriation in the amount of one million, two hundred and one thousand, thirty-eight dollars and recognizes an increase in resources in the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars, bringing the revised budget total to a hundred and thirty-nine million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and nine dollars.
Aaron, thank you very much for your detailed report. And with that, we will open the public hearing on this agenda item at six fifty-seven. If anyone would like to speak to this agenda item this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to make any comments. I see no one in house and virtually, if you'd like to make comment to this agenda items, star nine if you're on your phone or raise your virtual hand to be recognized. Stephanie, I see no one virtually, do you?
I do not.
With that, Ordinance twenty-four, or I will go ahead and close the public hearing at six fifty-eight. And with that, Ordinance twenty-four, twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget amendment. Counselor, do I have a motion, please?
I move to pass Ordinance twenty-four, twenty-three, amending the City of West Richland's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget, closing zero zero six coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund and establishing two, two oh eight debt services, Curb Cooperative Way Fund. Second.
Second, is there any other questions that weren't provided in the staff report you might have of Aaron this evening? It's a council member, Maran, you can go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you again very much, Aaron, for a very thorough report. I'm hoping that we'll be able to get the slides sent to us in email. Um, because it seems like they had even more information than what was in the packet, which is appreciated. But I did have some questions because there were some variations between what I saw in the presentation and what's in the packet. So for instance, for Fund Zero Zero One, for the licenses and permits in the packet, it shows that there was a change of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety, and it was significantly different in the packet. What was that?
Um, I think I had, I'd kind of split it out because I pulled building permits out separately because building permits is part of that. So, which was six hundred and fifty-five thousand, and then there was the additional, what was it, twelve thousand some in the animal license and such? So those two combined makes up that number.
Okay, thank you very much. That was, it was a very different number. Um, so then for Fund Three twenty-one, I'm wondering with the longer time that Benton REA is going to be paying that back to us, is that going to affect any money that we're going to be spending? Is that going to mean that we spend more on interest?
No.
No?
Uh, Benton REA is cover, uh, that was the agreement with Benton REA. They cover all the debt service payments. They've just opted rather than paying them all upfront, that they're going to take the time to pay them. So they'll send us a check every year, we'll turn around and make payment. So no additional funds from the city.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, for Fund Four zero one, I'm wondering in the packet for well number two, it shows that it was a difference of one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight. But in your presentation, it showed a hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight.
I can't answer that one.
Is there a way to go back to this?
My, my guess is the packet's right. My number was probably off because it's um principal plus interest and I probably forgot to grab the interest on my presentation.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, as long as it doesn't change anything in the long run. Um.
Oh, the uh, the official one is going to be the Exhibit A in your packet. That is the official budget.
Okay.
Like that cannot change. That is, once it's approved, that's what you're approving.
Thank you. And then finally, for Fund Four zero five, in your presentation, you had some other services with a difference of negative twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-six, and I couldn't find that in the packet anywhere. Uh, can you give a little bit more information on that?
Uh, the other services, I believe, was for the indirect cost allocation and I combined it with um professional services of so one was about a seven thousand something reduction and then professional services was like a twenty thousand reduction.
Well, this was for uh the Solid Waste Fund Four oh five. You had other services.
Off the top of my head, but uh. And it also included a reduction in insurance. So it was insurance, a reduction in professional services and then the reduction in ICAP.
Okay, so that was just a combination of a few of them in the packet.
For, yeah, for, because for the presentation, I didn't want to get into every detailed line. It was pretty detailed.
Right, okay. Thank, that's all I got. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Blue?
I want to thank you for such hard work. Um, just this one observation, you're projecting a ten percent reduction in the sales tax going forward, correct? Or overall for the budget?
Uh, that was for this budget.
So it's total?
Yeah.
If, I'm, I'm going to go back to the finance report you gave earlier, it actually showed it actually exceeding last year's or is that still?
I don't think the sales tax, it's sales tax didn't show it exceeding um.
Being last year's not?
It shouldn't have. I think it was a pretty.
Might be a little, you check that one out.
Okay.
But I, I do want to appreciate all the hard work and I, I don't want to go into details like we did before. Um, just for those in the audience, there's a little table. That is what we're approving. That table, all the other stuff is sort of floating back and forth. And if there are any mistakes, we have another budget amendment, correct? Thank you.
Hopefully, there's no mistakes. It's been highly reviewed.
This, oh, changes. How's that? It always changes.
Mayor Pro Tim, bring it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, during the discussion, Director Gwen, uh, you mentioned the Monsanto Class Action lawsuit proceeds that the city received for three hundred and fifty-six thousand some odd dollars. I think there's an interesting backstory to that, which the citizens might be uh interested in hearing, uh, either if you'd care to share that.
Uh, so we received a check one day and it was for that dollar amount and it was like, what is this for? And so, uh, it happened a few, quite a few years ago, a previous uh city clerk had actually signed us up for it and then randomly this showed up and it has to do with um I meant to bring even the paper just in case there was a question. Uh, do you remember? PCBs in the, yeah. In the storm, and it all has to do with the NPDES uh permit, which is how we tied it to the Stormwater Fund.
So we'll, we'll, uh, we'll hang that, the, the atta girl on Julie Richardson, our former city clerk that was paying attention and, and so when you get that little card that says Clax Haskins suit, I don't know if you're going to get that big of money back when you fill it out personally and send it in, but yeah, that was a, it was a nice little trinket. So we need to thank Julie for that next time I see her. Anyone else? And uh, with that, may I have all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimous and uh, Aaron, do please thank your team, uh, very thorough, hardworking, very well organized, very detailed, much appreciated. Uh, so thank you again. Okay, moving on to Items Eight, E and F for the public hearing and ordinance regarding the two thousand twenty-four property tax levy. And again, Aaron, uh, I will have Eric push the button on your mic so your finger will rest for your staff report.
So tonight's public hearing is to set property tax for twenty twenty-four. Um, there are two limits that affect the amount the city can levy. The first is the rate of taxation. The maximum levy rate uh for West Richland is three dollars and sixty cents less the regular levy rate from Benton County Fire District Four. The fire district's maximum levy rate is a dollar fifty. So if you take three dollars and sixty cents uh minus the dollar fifty, the result is two dollars and ten cents, which is the city's max. For the second limit, uh, restricts the amount of revenue generated for, by the levy for, for local governments with a population greater than ten thousand. The regular property tax increase is limited to the lesser of one percent or the implicit price deflator. And for twenty twenty-four, we're using one percent. What exactly does this mean? Uh, in your packet, uh, and on this first slide on the screen, you'll see the total revenue. Um, the city levied in twenty twenty-three was two million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The city can only increase the tax for existing homes by one percent or twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for twenty twenty-three. The general fund portion is twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and the portion allocated to the library fund is six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Last year, one of the questions that came up during this process uh was regarding the assessed valuation of homes going up and how that affects taxes paid by citizens. Many of you, possibly all of you, received a notification from the counter, county assessors this year that your assessed valuation uh increased. I put a few slides together to demonstrate the effect this has on taxes paid to the city and I will only speak uh from the city's perspective. So in this, uh, this is a hypothetical situation of a base year, we're going to call it year one. Uh, the total valuation for all homes is equal to um for each home is equal to a hundred thousand dollars for a total valuation of five hundred thousand dollars in this example. This scenario, the city uh would collect one thousand dollars. Um, each property pays an equal portion or two hundred dollars each. For this next year, uh, the city is capped at raising the property tax by the one percent or the maximum of one thousand, ten dollars. Uh, the same five properties will need to pay this amount. In this situation, uh, the assessed valuation increased uh fifty percent to a total of seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And for this scenario, um, in front of you here, each property went up an equal percentage. So their slice of the pie remains the same and each property pays two hundred and two dollars in property tax to the city. Here's another possibility for year two. Uh, the The city is still going to collect one thousand ten dollars. Total assessed valuation went up 50% to a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, in this situation, each property increased at a different rate. So in this scenario, Property A, C, and D saw decreases in their property tax paid to the city, and Property B and E saw increases. This is just to demonstrate from the city's perspective that your assessed valuation increasing does not necessarily mean that the property tax owner's burden to the city will increase. Again, I cannot speak to other jurisdictions. It really depends on how your individual property compares to your neighbors and how they went up in relationship. So the city levy ceiling is two dollars and ten cents in 2023. The levy rate is expected to be approximately a dollar fourteen, eighty-eight cents for the general fund and twenty-six cents for the library fund. The remaining statutory limit is the difference between the two-ten and the dollar fourteen, which is ninety-six cents. Multiply ninety-six cents by your total assessed valuation in the city, which is two billion, six hundred and twenty-six million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. This equates to two million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars in revenue. This is the dollar amount that represents the difference between what the city is estimated to collect versus the maximum collection amount. So for a homeowner of a four hundred thousand dollar home, the city portion of the annual property tax bill will be four hundred and fifty-seven dollars, with three hundred and fifty-four dollars to the general fund, which includes public safety, parks, and general government services, and the remaining hundred and three goes to the library. This next slide is just a summary of how your, how one dollar of property tax money gets split up from a residential household within the city of West Richland. So thirty-eight percent goes to the Richland School District, twenty-one percent for state schools, seventeen percent to the fire district, which includes EMS, nine percent to the city's general fund, eight percent to Benton County, three percent to the West Richland Library, two percent for the new police facility, and two percent for the Kennewick. So just this final slide I like to include for the excess levy to pay for the police facility to levy amount for 2023 is five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and will be used for making the bond payment on the police facility. For the homeowner of a four hundred thousand dollar home, the portion of the annual property tax bill to pay for the new police facility is approximately eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents or six dollars and eighty-two cents per month. In conclusion, the attached ordinance sets the 2024 property tax regular levy amount at a hundred and one percent of the 2023 levy amount plus any new construction. The 1% increase is included in the 2324 annual budget, and staff recommends passing the ordinance.
Thank you, Erin. With that, I will open the public hearing at 7:13. If anybody in person in the audience would like to speak to this agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address. I see no one in house, and if you virtually at star nine, or raise your virtual hand to be recognized. And I see no one virtually, Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
That we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:14. Ordinance 2523 for the 2024 ad valorem tax. Counsel, do I have a motion?
I moved to pass ordinance 25-23 and approve the levy certification fixing the amount of ad valorem tax to be assessed during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions of Erin that weren't previously answered in her staff report this evening from counsel? Counsel member Smart?
Yeah, Erin, just to, just to clarify, I know you said this clearly. But my understanding is this indicates an increase of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to point that out to our audience. This is not a huge amount of increase of tax revenue for the city, but it's what we're allowed to take. And it's far below, as you know, the inflation rate and so forth. So I just want to, I know that it's a, it's an issue with me that, that we run the efficient ship, and I think our, our staff does that. And so this increase, I'm happy to vote for because it's, it's small, and, and it's deserved, and I think that we need that. So, thank you.
Counselmember Moran?
Thank you. What I am going to ask is more of a, I already know the answer, and I'm also just saying it to kind of underline something that I've heard as a misunderstanding that a lot of people have when it comes to property tax, because I've had a lot of people say, I'm, I'm really tired of us raising this percentage because my property value has gone up, that means that I'm paying this much more. And just to hit on it hard as much as possible, if everybody goes up the same amount for assessed value, it is actually very little extra they are going to be paying in taxes, correct?
Correct. It would take a levy lid lift in order to actually make that tax increase be more.
And we currently don't have one of those.
Correct, we do not.
Right.
And then just, I don't think I said it, maybe I did, I don't remember, but the previous year's levy rate was a dollar thirty-three per assessed valuation, and we're dropping it to a dollar fourteen.
Right. And also to note, the amount that we're saying per thousand dollars valuation of home, that is an estimate, right? Based off of the total amount that we're planning on getting, isn't it?
What, what was your question?
Sorry, you're, when we're talking about how much somebody with a home would pay per thousand dollar valuation?
That, I was, it was just a figure out there, like if your home is four hundred thousand dollars, I could maybe break them out in different categories, but it's kind of a, just a ballpark number for an average home.
Right, exactly. So when we're saying that we are increasing by, we're increasing to a hundred and one percent, that's the total amount the city is going to be receiving in taxes. That's not how much extra we are going to be getting from everybody as a percentage of what they're paying currently. Just wanted to hit that extra hard. Thank you.
Counselmember Bloom?
Just to hit the point finally, we can double our levy technically. It's cut in half. We're allowed to have two dollars and twenty cents, and we're collecting one dollar and, and fourteen cents currently. So that's the impact of this cap has on the city funding. But the voters keep supporting the schools, not a bad thing, and raising the levy for the fire department as well. So one of the options that the city has to meet their revenue needs would be to ask voters to raise our levy. So just correct, and, and actually to the point of doubling it, our, our current funding for the library was a levy lid. So if you go back in the history, actually, the city's rate went from two dollars and twenty cents down to eighty-eight cents. So I think that's important to recognize the effect of that initiative. Oh, God. I, I can't remember when it happened, and that keeps shrinking the cities. So for us to come forth with a levy lid request would be very appropriate at, at some time. So, thank you.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous. My favorite slide is that dollar slide, I like that breakout. That's, that's pretty much cutting right, you don't need to say anything more than that one, that's for sure. Yeah, it gets smaller and smaller for sure. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to Items 8G. It's a resolution amending the master fee schedule for solid waste rates. And Erin, this is your show this evening for your director's report on that, please.
Yeah, I don't talk, but when I do, it's finally a lot. So the city contracts with Ed's disposable to provide solid waste services for West Richland residents and businesses. In October 23rd, the city received a letter from Ed's requesting an annual CPI increase and tipping fee increase. On October 26th, the city received a second letter from Ed's requesting a rate change based on a rate study Ed's completed with the Utilities and Transportation Commission, or UTC, as I'll refer to it, in spring of 2023, utilizing the 2022 data. The last rate study was completed seven years prior to the current one. On October 30th, Public Works Director Roscoe Slade and I met with Ed's to discuss their request. The requested rate adjustment had three parts. The UTC study identified a gap in the rates being charged to the customers and the rate in which Ed should be charging. The UTC uses a method to determine the revenue requirement of solid waste hauling companies. The model uses the test period adjusted, which was 2022, and average investment to calculate the revenue required to recover the, those expenses and allow on investment return. The rate increase request includes a difference from what Ed's charged in 2023 compared to what the UTC study said we should have charged. So it's that delta, as Roscoe would like to refer to it. The second part of the rate increase is the annual CPI adjustment allowed by Contract Section 3.2.1, as outlined in the first letter. And the third component is a tipping fee that was in the first letter, allowed by the Contract 3.2.4. The proposed rate increase would increase a single residential ninety-six gallon can by three dollars and eighty-nine cents. These rates would be effective February 22nd, 2024, and will be on a utility customers' bill received at the beginning of April and due April 25th. Staff recommends passing the resolution and adopting the new rates. If the new rates are adopted, Solid Waste Fund 405 would see an increase in revenue and expenses, and this would require a future budget amendment to recognize both components.
Thank you, Erin. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this agenda item this evening? If so, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record in three minutes. I see no one in house, and virtually at star nine, and raise virtual hand if you'd like to comment. I see no one virtually, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Counsel, may I have a motion, please?
I moved to pass Resolution 76-23, amending Master Fee Schedule E for solid waste collection rates.
Second?
Second, is there any clarifying questions from Erin that you'd like to have this evening? That was not presented in the staff report? I see none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Moving on to Item 8H, is a resolution amending the master fee schedule for stormwater rates. And again, Finance Director Erin Gunn will present her staff report.
So last month, staff completed a comprehensive review and update of the stormwater utility rate model. The rate model incorporates previous year's actual revenue and expenditures and estimated revenue and expenditures through 2033. Some of the goals of the update were to maintain low monthly stormwater rates while meeting the Department of Ecology's MPDES Phase II Stormwater Permit requirements. Update the rate model so it could be easily adapted to changing operational needs and utilized during the budgeting process. Maintain stormwater operations reserve equal to a minimum of two months of operations and maintenance, and increase the stormwater emergency reserve from fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars when rate increases are needed. Spread them out over time to mitigate financial impacts. Ensure stormwater utility remains financially secure. Stormwater rates were last updated November 2016 for the time period between December 22nd, 2016 through the current period, so today. The last time stormwater rates were increased was December 22nd, 2021. The proposed change updates rates beginning in 2024 through 2029. So for 2024, it would go to, for, this is for a single-family homes, would go to nine dollars and fifty cents, which is an increase of two dollars a month. For 2025, it would be ten dollars or an increase of fifty cents. 2026 would be ten dollars and seventy-five cents. 2027, eleven dollars and fifteen cents. 2028, eleven dollars and forty cents. And 2029, eleven dollars and sixty-five cents. So we are looking at this as adopting six years' worth of rates all at once. Some of the other changes in the rate model, the model splits out costs of utility billing and engineering from operations. This is to help us see where the changes are happening. General ledger codes were added to assist with budgeting for future years. The multifamily rate increases from 50% of the single-family rate to 75% of the single-family rate. Low-income senior and low-income disabled rate changed from 50% of the single-family rate to 45% of the single-family rate. The updated rate model forecasts revenue for all rate classes, not just the single-family rate. Commercial rate categories have been expanded to include categories with parking spaces up to 500. Currently, it's at sixteen parking spaces or more. So we've broken it out into some different categories. The emergency reserve for stormwater increased from two months operating plus fifty thousand emergency reserve to two months operating plus two hundred thousand for emergency reserve. And equipment replacement reserve increased from twenty-three thousand per year to approximately twenty-nine and a half thousand per year. Estimated replacement of the 2022 street sweeper is January of 2035. The updated rate model was reviewed by the city's utility committee on November 7th. Staff and utility committee recommend counsel passing the attached resolution amending the master fee schedule for stormwater rate changes in the next six years, 2024 through 2029. The proposed fee increase would increase stormwater collection revenue in the 404 Stormwater Utility Fund. No additional appropriations would be required for 2324 budget. A future budget would be required to recognize the additional revenue.
Thank you, Erin. If there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to this agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes for comment. And again, seeing no one in house, we'll move to the virtual screen. Star nine, by phone or virtual hand? And again, Stephanie, I see no one virtually, do you?
I do not see any hands, no.
Counsel, may I have a motion, please?
Moved to pass Resolution 7723, amending the master fee schedule E for stormwater rates.
Second.
Second, any clarifying questions from Erin was not in the staff report? Counselmember Bloom?
Erin, or Roscoe, whichever one wished the answer. The windfall of three hundred thousand dollars that went to stormwater, was that factored into these rate increases? It's, I mean, considering that the overall budget's a million, that's a 30% increase in budgetary base.
It, it is in there. That actually helped us make the emergency reserve from fifty thousand to two hundred thousand pretty easily. And then we haven't updated these rates since 2021, so we've been kind of slowly, I don't want to say eating the reserves, but absorbing the inflation, the costs of everything going up. I mean, fuel, everything. What else was I going to say?
Yeah, bottom line, that helped reduce the overall increase in the, in the rates. We use that to, otherwise, the increase would have been more because the rates haven't changed in the last two years. And a lot of this is coming from our ecology MPDS Phase Two permit requirements.
Thank you.
Questions? Being done. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Much appreciated. Erin, thank you for all of your hard work this evening. Hopefully, your microphone button will get a rest here for the next few minutes. Uh, with that, we have no unfinished business this evening or new business. So this is the opportune time for the second citizen public comment. If you'd like to provide comments to the city council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Rob Palmer, thirty six hundred South Highlands Boulevard, West Richland. I just wanted to thank Erin. Um, I'm glad I stayed here tonight. A lot of great financial information. I'm I'm not a financial wizard or anything. I just wanted to remind you guys that from what I got out of her report is that there's plenty of revenue sources without resorting to drug money to balance our budget. So I hope you guys measure until December nineteenth. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dan Ritchie, five oh eight P, Austin Drive. The hour's late. I'm old. I'm tired, so I'll be brief. And I want to speak a little bit about the retail cannabis store and how I won't I won't talk about how that's in direct violation of our mission and vision statements. I won't go there. I won't talk about how that we've been here before. Sure, the voices might be, some of the voices are a little bit different, but it's the same words coming out. I mean, and it wasn't that many years ago that we had this very discussion. And that you saw the very same things, the very same sentiment being expressed by the citizens. So I'm really kind of at a loss as to why we're here again. I'm not going to talk about how the Facebook survey, the pseudo survey, is not a vote. It is not a form of governance. And in while it may be interesting and give us something to talk about and maybe point us in a direction or something, it is not a form of governance. And I won't talk about the fact that of all the people that have talked, that have gotten at this microphone and spoken, all right, the fifty people have been opposed. One person has stepped up here besides the guy that wants to sell it to us. One person has stepped up here in favor, okay? So I won't talk about that either. We'll just leave that alone. But what I do want to talk about is the point that Ms. Rents brought up tonight, okay? This is something that's been scratching at me and and bugging me is the fact that I go into the minutes and what will it say about what I'm gonna say tonight, what I'm just saying here right now? I would like to think that there's a lot more substance to what's being presented at this microphone than opposed. When I go back and look at the minutes that have been going on, all right, and all of the valid, solid, lot of, lot of good substance comments, all I see is opposed. And I'm sorry, but that just doesn't do it for me. And as a taxpayer, I would request that my city put a little bit more meat on the bone there and tell us what was the substance, what was said, and why. And so thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Rents. I appreciate that. And um, I also, now on a lighter note, it's the end of the evening. I encourage you all to come out to the Bikes for Tykes. You knew it was coming. Yeah, I encourage you all to come out for Bikes for Tykes. It's on December first, Three Rivers Convention Center. We're gonna be building sixteen hundred and ten bicycles, and it will be a hoot, I guarantee you, and I will buy you lunch. Come on out, and it's a good lunch.
Uh, Dan Ryan, I don't need to repeat address, do I? Have me on there, fifty seven oh two Mowberry. But anyway, want a clarification? I know you're tabled, ordinance, the last one. Uh, L. Why?
Not a dialogue back and forth during a public comment session. You have the opportunity to make comment. And through the council, uh, comments this evening, council sometimes takes notes of of things that people bring up, and they may a- address that at that point in time.
Okay, that's a hypothetical question. Anyway, um, it just, it concerns me that uh anybody's considering a retail use text amendment. If the item has been settled, that tells me it's not been settled. And it tells me that all the things that you've mentioned before are up for question. I'm rather surprised at that. And by putting it off, that tells me that maybe you want to get out from under the pressure, so holiday season is coming up. Bus bus people here the next time because they got things to do. What other impression can we get from that? If everybody was sincere last time, seems like that's a shut door case right then there. I have no idea why this is going on and on and on. But if that's the game that wants to be played, and that's what I'm referring to, it is a game. There will be people here until you hear what the citizens are asking for because very obvious, you can't find people that support it. And I see no justification when we have one so close by for getting any more of it. Just doesn't make any sense. And I've seen a number of people who've been taking the medical marijuana and so on. I know what happened to their heads. Thank you.
Harry Davies, thirty seven oh six South Lake Drive, West Richland. And I'm a little embarrassed to say, after living there thirty years, that I've been in this chambers a lot more in the last month or so than I had previously. So um, I think that speaks to two things. Um, one is um, this particular topic of the cannabis store is very important um to myself and to my husband. The other one is that I'm learning some things. Thank you very much. Um, and the importance of participating and also supporting our city government. So I appreciate that very much as well. I'm a little disappointed that the next meeting where this uh, the cannabis um retail store will be December nineteenth, which is so close to the Christmas holiday. Um, clearly, though, some of us came out here a couple days before Thanksgiving, but um I'll be here on the night, whatever that day is, the nineteenth. The other comment I want to make is my husband and I did sit in um in yesterday's meeting virtually and listened to it as well. And I would hope that there is a separation between um the um issues that were brought up around um how the council um interacted with each other and the responses and the complaints, and that that will be um held separate from making decisions based on what you see and hear from your community members and what we want and what we hope our council will represent to us. Thank you.
Anyone else? And virtually either star nine or raise your virtual hand to be recognized to address counsel this evening. Stephanie, I see no one virtually. Do you?
I do not.
We'll go ahead and move on to staff, council, reports and comments. Uh, senior staff, if you have anything for us this evening? Mr. Minnethall?
Uh, since there's an audience, I just wanted to make the announcement, if you haven't heard already, that uh Iron Man has chosen to come to the city or the Tri-Cities, not just West Richardson, but they will be riding bicycles through our community next year and on September twenty second. So uh, just be prepared for that. They will be driving their bikes for our community. It's a great event. Brings tens of thousands of people to the Tri-Cities from all over the world. Uh, it's exciting. It's good to see that uh, Visit Tri-Cities is taking the charge on that. Uh, it's great to have them as part as a partner in our community to bring these types of events out. So just wanted to make everyone aware of that, that it's coming, um, and it's gonna be a great event.
On to council, council comments, reports. Council member Smart?
Uh, yes, I just um, like to thank everybody for coming out. Uh, I'm equally disappointed that we didn't talk about the uh, the pot shop ordinance tonight. Um, I would ask that um council does consider uh making at least upwards of three points on each individual's comments that they make at the podium or even by writing. Uh, I don't, I don't think we have the the space to really go into deep length, but I think it'd be better than just saying opposed. Um, so I I would entertain, I would ask if council would put that on the agenda um for some future meeting and maybe uh change that officially as to how we record our minutes. Um, I don't think it would be terribly difficult. I think it'd be very respectful of the of the folks that that make the effort to come and speak. The other thing I would ask uh is that um, we try to get the minutes of last night's meeting uh posted and the recording as soon as as practical so that uh the audience can have a chance to listen to that meeting. Um, which will explain uh why we're postponing tonight's decision until December nineteenth, I think, is what was said. So I think that's important, and that'll be the best way for you to understand what is being, what's transpiring here. So uh, I'll leave my comments at that. And again, just appreciate y'all coming out. Hope to see you again in December.
Make a good point, Councilman Smart, that uh you can go to the website and listen to the entire recording if you want to get everything by Radom, the whole nine yards. So uh, yeah, that is available for everybody, so. Yet while uh a a long laundry list of words, it can all be heard in live and in person if you want to hear it again, so. Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
And it usually takes some time to get the recording posted. I don't know how long usually, but we'll try to keep that as expedient as we can make it.
Council member Bloom?
Almost have a senior moment here. Um, I I want to say that I attended the Ben Benton uh Conservation District meeting last Wednesday, and they're going to be our new neighbor. And they're quite excited about moving in across the street. Um, hopefully, they can meet the uh construction standards we've set above our own building. So um, anyway, um, so they're they're moving forward with that. Um. The uh with that, um, we're we're also um there are a number of funding mechanisms coming in for repairian um improvements along the Yakima. And actually, there are two separate funds, one's coming through Benton uh Conservation District flow, and the other's coming through the Yakima Basin Fish and Wildlife Recovery Board. So it might be, I believe the area around the golf course, which was leased to the golf course, is technically West Richland's property. Although it's leased, we might, we might look at what projects we would use, especially along that um area by the uh Gateway Park to think about whether we want to apply for a project for repairian um uh expansion. Also, I I I heard that Fox Island is up for sale.
Yes.
And so um, that that might be interesting. Anyway, thank you.
Good. I'm gonna go ahead and move to Councilmember Stoker, who is remote. Councilmember Stoker, go ahead, sir.
Yes, um, well, first off, sorry, Erin, to put you on the spot. You did, you've done a wonderful job tonight, but um, during your initial presentation, I did have a question that nobody saw my hand up, so I thought I would ask it now. Um, what can, I I may have missed it, or it's been announced before, but what was the amount from the city of Richland that we received in the impact fees? Can that be shared? Is that?
Yeah, the mitigation impact fees. My apology, Ken. I I missed you on that one, so uh my bad there.
It's a small hand. It's easy to miss. I understand.
From, you're talking the traffic mitigation?
Yes, traffic mitigation.
Uh, two hundred and fifty two thousand dollars.
Thank, thank you. Um, and and secondly, uh, I I also want to say, appreciate everyone also who's come out tonight. Um, I I will admit, I am disappointed that we have postponed the vote for the the last item on the agenda. Um, you know, we've been, this has been going on for quite a while since the summer. I don't remember the exact date when the article came out in the Herald, but it's been a hot topic for a long time, and I was really anxious to see it done and over with, regardless of which direction it went. Um, and and honestly, um, I feel bad for the people in online attending as well as those who are in the audience in person. Um, part of me almost feels like you wasted your time. I mean, on, I I I'm happy to see you here. I want you here every time. But if this was the sole purpose for you coming out, I feel we let you down. Um, and uh, I'm I'm sorry about that. Uh, you know, there was an incident about a year, year and a half ago within the council, and one of the items that came up was about wasting people's time. And I'm sorry, but I feel like that has come to fruition today with our citizens and audience. So with that, um, thank you very much for letting me speak. Um, unfortunately, when the December nineteenth comes around, I'll have to be remotely connecting again. Everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you, council member. Appreciate it. Council member Moran?
Thank you very much. Um, first, again, I want to repeat, as I had said before and as others have said, thank you so much, all of you for coming out. We have been listening to what you are saying. I know for me personally, I have been taking what you are saying to heart, so please do not feel that with us not responding directly that we aren't listening to you. Um, please continue to stay involved. Uh, we have boards and commissions that always need people on them, and we need people to volunteer for them in order for our city to work. So please, please stay involved if you can. Boards and commissions would be a great way to do so. We would love to have your support in helping us with those. Um, initially, I will say that I was a bit um, at the very least concerned. Hmm, that's even too harsh. Um, I was disappointed that we weren't going to be voting tonight on uh eight I, the original agenda eight I. But in thinking about it, I'm realizing now that this is allowing more time so that more citizens, if they would like to, can give us their comments, can can talk to us about what they would like to see. That way, we can have more of this transparency, more of this discussion. Because I feel like that might have been what we were missing is this discussion. And through these meetings, we can have these discussions with you, and many people have said things and and absolutely, yes, thank you. Um, I think that it is much better to be calm and collected and very thorough with something like this rather than to rush into a response. And I would also just like to say that um, in regards to the minutes, um, actually, first, to one of the comments earlier that was said about the citizen comments, and honestly, I kind of absolutely agree. I think that we kind of have them bass ackward where didn't, okay, I didn't curse. Good. Um, gotta watch those spoonerisms. Um, how I feel that it might be better for us to, in the first citizen public comment, to allow comment on items that are on the agenda rather than items not. That way, we can hear at the meeting what the comments are prior to the actual vote. And I know that for items that have public hearing, we do have that, absolutely, and that oftentimes we allow comment even without a public hearing. We we do allow that, but just so that it's known very much and it's written on paper so that people are aware of it. I think it might be important for that. And then perhaps the second citizen public comment could be about items not on the agenda or response to votes of things that had been done during that meeting. Um, so. So thank you for the comment on the comments or for the uh citizen comment, the public comment on that. I agree. Um as for the minutes, I have been very thankful to our clerk in. Making it to now all of our council meetings, whether they're special meetings or regular meetings, are on YouTube fully. And it was really great to see that pop up because I have subscribed to the city's uh YouTube channel, which I recommend everybody do so. And that gives you updates whenever there's new videos on there. And so I got that update ding pretty early today, saying that the video from yesterday was uploaded. So the entire video from last night is uploaded currently on the city's YouTube channel. And when it comes to putting all of the information or at least a synopsis of the comments in the minutes. If there were um a small amount of comments, I might agree with that. However, I know that. Time is very valuable to our staff because there is so much that they have to do. I think uh our clerk has what, four different hats that she has to wear at very minimum during the day? And when it comes to writing these minutes, it does take a lot. So I think that with having the video available. That makes it to where you can see the entirety of the comments. And I wouldn't want somebody to feel slighted because their comments had been clipped in a way that they thought was. Not showing a mu- enough of what they wanted to say. And that's why the video is there. So I. While I understand about wanting to have at least a synopsis of the comments in the minutes, I think that with the video available. Um it might not be absolutely necessary. I know that we go above and beyond what's required by the um by the states. Is that OPMA that requires that in the minutes? I can't recall. Either way, we go above and beyond already. Um not to say that we can't continue to go above and beyond, but with the videos out there. Anyway, I won't belabor my thoughts uh anymore because um I'm freezing. So thank you.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a big shout out to the West Richland Police Department. And the city maintenance crew that helped put on a fabulous um Veterans Day parade. It was turned out just beautiful and for all the citizens that came out from all, all towns. Um it was a huge, huge crowd this year and. And I know working with the vets as much as I do, they really feel. So honored that day and it's, I'm so proud of our city for standing behind the veterans and. And everything that we're involved with and all the monuments that we have around. It's just, it's just warms your heart and. That's what our city is about, taking care of each other and being there. And so I want to thank you all for going to it and thank you guys because without the city and the police. Um things wouldn't run quite as smooth. So either other than it was windy. It was a bit windy, but. But other than that, it was a great parade. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Mayor Pro Tim, bring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um to paraphrase Mr. Ritchie, uh it's late, I'm tired. Uh and getting old too, so I'll try to keep my comments brief. Um I had the uh in addition to thanking the two dozen or so individuals that are here tonight. Uh thank you for your time and for sharing with us your thoughts. But I want to focus my uh next minute or so just on things outside the city. Last week I had the privilege, and it truly was a privilege to attend the National League of Cities City Summit, which was held in Atlanta, Georgia. And about thirty five hundred people attended that event, local uh government officials from cities and towns and villages across the country. From all, from forty nine states. And what that did was it gave me the opportunity to uh exchange ideas. Uh come up with uh perhaps some collaborative ideas together to solve problems that they're facing that we might also face. Because the problems and challenges. That we face are often ones that other cities have either already addressed or are also facing as well. And so between the National League of Cities and the Association of Washington Cities, of which I'm a secretary. Uh I'm proud of the work that I've been able to try to do to advocate, not just for West Richland. But for the rest of Benton County and for the needs of our community. Uh the Association of Washington Cities, as you may know, represents the two hundred and eighty one towns and cities that comprise the state of Washington. Next week. We will have a meeting, which I will attend, on federal legislative priorities. And what we're focused on there is protecting public local control and opposing policies that undermine. Local regulatory authority or impose unfunded mandates. So that's some of the uh topics that we are bringing to discussion in order to pose to our federal legislators, members of Congress and the Senate. So I wanted to share that all with all of you and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, bring. Just to want to touch briefly on citizen public comment, besides the two opportunities that you have to make comments. If you listen to everything that I said tonight in regards to agenda items, I gave everybody an opportunity to comment on that set of agenda item. The only time you won't see that is when you have a closed record hearing, which you you cannot in interject unless you've put uh forth your comments during a. Uh a public hearing. So just as a reminder, uh while you have two public care or two public comment opportunities. I also ask that if there's anybody who would like to comment on the agenda item. Uh you're open to do so, to come up to the podium and and state your concerns that you may have. So. Uh I'm giving everybody the opportunity through every agenda item that is allowed by law to make comment on. Take advantage of it. So with that, we will go ahead and let these old people go home and go to bed. Mayor Pro Tim, bring myself and Mr. Ritchie. And thanks again for everybody coming out this evening. I appreciate it. We'll. Close this meeting at seven fifty six. Thank you.
Thank you.